... Board of Commissioners meeting is now in session. The Honorable Mayor Jeff Mason presiding.
Thank you, sir. Thank you and welcome tonight. I'm going to ask Mr. Joey Nixon to listen in prayer, but please remember Texas session, Mr. Terry Collins is fighting some issues with his foot, so just keeping him in your prayers this week.
Please pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day, Lord, and many blessings you give us. We appreciate your presence here safely tonight. I pray you be with us. Pray that we all remind our hearts of you, Lord, and enact and take them the way that you want us to, Lord. Just follow your lead, Lord. Appreciate the rain you brought to our community, Lord. Pray you be with all those that are sick right now, all those dealing with loss of loved ones, Lord, their families. Just put your hand on a blessing. Just pray good to you, Lord. Pray you be with their communities, their country. Pray you be with everybody here tonight and families they represent. Send us all home safely. Thanks back next one time. Pray that you just lead God directly in every way and appreciate most of all your sending your son for our salvation. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Do you want me to pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the representative for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated. Ms. Amanda, will you do a roll call?
Chris Nixon?
Here.
Glenn Reese?
Here.
Terry Givens?
Here.
Billy Bass?
Here.
Greta Kirby?
Here.
Jason Stewart?
Here.
Jimmy Winfrey?
Here.
Stephanie Michaela?
Here.
Shannon Minchi?
Here.
Erica Evil?
Here.
Ronald Schumate?
Here.
Ronald Cowan?
Here.
Linda Nixon?
Here.
Eddie Stout?
Here.
Casey Elrod?
Here.
Steve Babcock?
Here.
Bill Reese?
Here.
Tommy Bain?
Here.
Joseph Nixon?
Here.
Dennis Hackett?
Here.
Tim Beller?
Here.
Teresa Gross?
Here.
Frank Woodard?
Here.
Twenty-three.
Yes.
Okay.
Sorry.
All right. So we have, everybody's here, twenty-three prison. All right. Item number five is the approval of the minutes of the July 12th meeting. They are on pages one through five.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve Steve Babcock?
Second.
Second, Ronald Schumate. I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes. Any questions or discussion or corrections? Seeing none? Favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Move on to item number six, announcements, and that is the election of the Smith County Road Commissioners. And if you remember correctly, both gentlemen, Mr. Shores and Mr. Kemp, were nominated on our July 12th meeting, so there is no need for nomination. We will start with the vote, and it will be, you will vote by the name of the person you want to have the job or to appoint. No, it's already, it's already done.
Chris Nixon?
Mr. Kemp.
Glenn Reese?
Kemp.
Terry Givens?
Shores.
Billy Bass?
Shores.
Greta Kirby?
Shores.
Jason Stewart?
Shores.
Jimmy Winfrey?
Kemp.
Stephanie Michaela?
Kemp.
Shannon Minchi?
Kemp.
Erica Evil?
Kemp.
Ronald Schumate?
Shores.
Ronald Cowan?
Kemp.
Linda Nixon?
Abstain.
Eddie Stout?
Kemp.
Casey Elrod?
Kemp.
Steve Babcock?
Abstain.
Bill Reese?
Kemp.
Tommy Bain?
Kemp.
Joseph Nixon?
Kemp.
Dennis Hackett?
Kemp.
Tim Beller?
Kemp.
Teresa Gross?
Kemp.
Frank Woodard?
Kemp.
Sixteen Kemp, five Shores.
All right. We have a vote of sixteen from Mr. Kemp, five from Mr. Shore, and two abstentions. Mr. Kemp, you are appointed as Road Commissioner of Smith County until August of next year, when the election happens again. Congratulations. All right. Moving on to the recognition of Ms. Barbara Cannapple. Ms. Barbara, I don't know how many of you know, but she did retire recently from her work as the Drug Coalition. She kind of stepped back and we had a retirement dinner, and I'll just read to you the proclamation we read that night for her, or that morning for her. Says whereas Barbara Cannapple is married to Dawn Cannapple, and together they have childrens David Hickman, Robert Hickman, Sierra Dante, Austin Cannapple, and Tyler Cannapple, and fourteen grandchildren. And whereas she is presently serving on the Carthage City Council, keeps Smith County beautiful, Fellowship of Christian Athletes, Director and Founder of Youth and Family Resource Network, and a longtime member of the Smith County Rotary Club. And whereas Barbara is a former Smith County Commissioner and an instructor of Break the Cycle, she has worked tirelessly and with great compassion for the youth in Smith County in many capacities in the Smith County school system. And whereas as Director of Youth and Family Resource Network, The Spot, she has provided a safe environment, unconditional love, fun activities, social and emotional learning and assistance for youth and families for over 25 years. All her work in local government has been solely to better her community. With her husband, Don, they provide a music ministry to the local nursing home and numerous churches in the county. And whereas she was appointed Executive Director of the New Forest Smith County Drug Prevention Coalition in 2010, which she has grown from a non-funded coalition with one employee to overseeing six grants totaling over $315,000 plus annually. And whereas as Director, she has been instrumental in multiple events and programs such as Power in the Pews, Recovery Round Tables, Lights for Recovery, a documentary with PBS, worked with the local hospital ER to change opioid dispensing policy, Tennessee Save a Life program, Prom Night Done Right, drug takeback events, drug-free workplace trainings, and Sheriff's Department alcohol compliance checks. And whereas she has taken too many used account to week-long numerous counts, conferences, and trainings for over 25 years. To glorify God, Barbara has always been led by her strong faith, love, and commitment to serve and help others. Now therefore, I, Smith County Mayor Jeff Mason, declare May 12th as Youth Prevention Day in the honor of Ms. Barbara Cannapple. We thank her for all the hard work and dedication to this county. So we thank Ms. Barbara for that. All right. We'll move on to item number seven, and that's amendments to the agenda, approval of agenda. One item that was left off the agenda that should be on there is the election of the District Three open seat for the county commission. So at this time, I would take a motion to add that to the agenda, right here at number seven.
Motion added to the agenda.
Motion by Erica?
Second.
Second by Joey Nixon. I have a motion and a second added to the agenda. Any questions or discussions? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. At this time, with that being added, I would take an approval of the agenda motion.
Approval of the agenda.
All right. Erica, what about that?
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Linda Nixon. I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as written with one change. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Well, then we will elect a Commissioner's seat for District Three for the open seat for Mr. Dalton Pascal. I did, you did, most of you should have received a letter from Mr. Cam DeCosta, I think I'm saying that right. He presented a letter for his, to be considered. Is there anyone else here tonight that would like to be considered?
Scotty Barrett.
Scotty. All right. Scotty Barrett, you're in. All right. Is there anyone else that would like to be considered? If not, I would take nominations at this time.
Mr. Chairman, I nominate Mr. Scotty Barrett.
All right. Jimmy Winfrey nominate Scotty Barrett?
I'll second.
All right. I have a motion and a second to nominate Mr. Scotty Barrett. Any other nominations?
I am nominate Mr. Cam DeCosta.
All right. Erica, you go on, that's Cam DeCosta. All right. I have a second. I don't have that second. So I do have a nomination for Scotty Barrett and one for Cam DeCosta. Any other nominations? If not, we'll do a roll call and start with District Three, please.
Jimmy Winfrey?
Mr. Barrett.
Stephanie Michaela?
Barrett.
Chris Nixon?
Barrett.
Glenn Reese?
Mr. Barrett.
Terry Givens?
Barrett.
Billy Bass?
Mr. Barrett.
Greta Kirby?
Barrett.
Jason Stewart?
Barrett.
Shannon Minchi?
Mr. Barrett.
Erica Evil?
Mr. DeCosta.
Ronald Schumate?
Barrett.
Ronald Cowan?
Barrett.
Linda Nixon?
Barrett.
Eddie Stout?
Barrett.
Casey Elrod?
Barrett.
Steve Babcock?
Barrett.
Bill Reese?
Barrett.
Tommy Bain?
Mr. Barrett.
Joseph Nixon?
Barrett.
Dennis Hackett?
Mr. Barrett.
Tim Beller?
Mr. Barrett.
Teresa Gross?
Mr. Barrett.
And Frank Woodard?
Barrett.
Twenty-two to one, Mr. Scotty Barrett is elected to finish out that seat for Mr. Dalton Pascal. I would tell Mr. Barrett and Mr. Kemp, get with Stacy, and she will get a time set up to swear you both in and get your prayer words done. Call her tomorrow. All right. Moving on, the next item, Mr. County Mayor report. As far as American Recovery Fund Act, the file rules have not been issued. They're supposed to be out in September, but we're doing it with federal government, so that could change too. But we're still holding till they get file rules because we don't want to pay money out and have to pay it back, so that's where we're at with that. Baker Industrial Property, we're still working on getting this sold for an industrial development. Our grant contract that we received from the state is up in September, I think it's the last of September, so that one million dollar site development grant will need to go back. As you all know, we worked hard to find a solution and meet those match requirements, but the cost of developing that property is too high to ask the taxpayers to put that bill today, so we will have to get that back. All right. Census data. Re-districting committee met on July the 26th for the first meeting. Data is to be released August the 16th. We hope to be able to start with the project of re-districting at our next meeting on August the 30th. Our timeline is to have something this body can vote on for October. With a call primary from the newly formed Republican Party Executive Committee, our timeline has been expedited on that, so that's got to be done by October where Yvonne can do all her work and then be ready for picking up papers somewhere in the middle of December for that, next year's election. That's all I've got for right now. Any questions for me? If not, we'll move on to financial reports.
I have any questions? These are up there if you want.
Any questions for Daisy? All right. Number nine is your, you see your committee reports. All right. We'll move on to number 10 is new business. We have approvals for the Circuit Court, General Sessions Court, Sheriff's Office, Trustee's Office, Chancery Court, Risher D., County Clerk, year-end financial reports. Does that need action to approve those? Thank you, Dennis. All right. I would take a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve Tommy Bain?
Second.
Second, Casey Elrod. Sorry, motion and a second. Any questions or discussion on these reports? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Item B is the resolutions to re-establish the Smith County Commission regular meetings back here. If you remember, we did pass resolutions to move them to Ag Center, and then you guys voted to move them back here, so we were just passing a resolution that says that, so.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve Steve Babcocks?
Second.
Second. Dennis Hackett? I have a motion and a second. Any questions? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution carries. All right. Item C are notaries. You have a list of notaries before you. I would take a motion to approve those?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve Dennis Hackett?
Second.
Second, Terry Givens. I have a motion and a second to approve the list of notaries. Any questions or discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Other business, our attorney needs to address us in executive, did the executive session, Senator? So at this time, we will go into executive session, so we would ask that anybody that's not a voting member of this body to leave.